I'd like to call the meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded. I would ask if there's anyone else recording this meeting? Seeing none, if you'd please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. I assume one or two of you are here for the public hearing. If not to actually read your budget, then to hear the reading of the budgets. So I will turn it over to Dr. Brunel for the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So with your permission, I'm going to go to the podium and do a brief overview. Thank you, everyone, and welcome to the public hearing for the FY '20 School Department's budget. So this budget really reflects the needs of all of the schools in the Auburn Public Schools. Noted here are our five schools, but what's most important is the students and staff who work in those on a daily basis. As we've done each year, the development of this budget was driven by our mission, our vision, and our core values. And just as we have done since 2008, it was those core values that drove our decision-making. The most important question that we continually asked being, how will this impact students and their achievement? You'll see very heavy emphasis throughout this budget of the strategic plan. That was a document building on the work that was done back in 2013. In November of 2017, approximately 140 school and community representatives from all facets of our community joined together at Auburn Middle School to answer the question of how will we continue to evolve as a school district to prepare our pre-K through 12 students to meet the opportunities and challenges of a changing world. Strategic plan noted here is the result of that, with a smaller team working biannually to make updates to that. Just some important information as a contextual backdrop. So the number of students that we have in the Auburn Public Schools, as you can see here, is just shy of 2,600. And the demographics that we have in terms of free and reduced lunch go from a low of 24 percent at one school to a high of 32 percent at another school, for an average of 27 percent of our students qualifying for free or reduced lunch. Another important fact is the enrollment figure. So looking back the 11 years up to the current school year, we have added 185 students over that time. That's a net gain of students. You do see that we have 82 school choice students, but that's a net gain of Auburn students. Obviously, those students have an impact on the budget for increased needs. Also throughout this budget, you will hear from our administrators as they present that there really is a strong emphasis in supporting our students not only academically, athletically, and through the arts, but also in terms of their social-emotional development. Children struggle with issues such as anxiety, depression, abuse, mental health issues, homelessness, and the like, all under the umbrella of social-emotional, and it really is a top priority in our schools. So the priorities, as listed by the school committee and supported by the leadership team, student safety is paramount. It is the top priority for us. So before anything else can happen, our students need, and staff, need to be able to work in an environment where they feel safe so that they can learn, work, grow, and thrive together. You'll see in this budget, as just mentioned, some social and emotional support professionals, including a counselor at Swanson Road, as well as two district-wide SEL, as they refer to, support professionals. Also, we've added some ABA support per Students Individual Education Plans. That's a requirement through the special ed law. And also, we have maintenance for safety funding in our budget. Obviously, only second to safety is our students' achievement. Our goal as a district is to be sure that we provide our students with opportunities so that they can excel through whatever means they so choose. We are looking to add a grade three and five teacher at Swanson Road, primarily to address class size issues. However, you'll only see a budget impact for grade five because there's a teacher going up from Bryn Mawr due to a smaller class size there. We will be looking to add an English language tutor at Auburn Middle School. Desi has very strict requirements, and based on numbers, we need to provide a certain amount of time and supports to those students. There's money in this budget to continue our early college opportunities. Preschool remains a priority at the other end, to really try to, and through the school committee's support, to minimize or eliminate financial barriers, understanding the critical importance of early childhood learning. You'll see evidence of both before and beyond the school day learning opportunities and IA and ABA support through our unified sports program, which continues to expand and excel so that those children can really embrace those opportunities. Other priorities, as mentioned already, are class size. We want to be sure that they're at 25 or below at the elementary level and at appropriate levels elsewhere. Technology, and this is partially funded through our CIP, so not so much reflected in our budget, but we have basically a one-to-one program in grades three through 12. It's in grades six through 12, the students have it 24/7. Three, four, and five, it's during the school day. And approximately a one-to-two environment at our primary schools. Textbooks, we always want to make sure that the materials are current in front of our students, and the priority in this budget is on social studies, textbooks, and materials. The educator evaluation system, just as we believe that our students need to have the materials and support so that they can achieve at high levels, so too do we want our teachers and staff to be able to do the same. As a leadership team, we continue with our learning walks, which really help for us to calibrate our evaluation practices. Professional development, just as I said, in order for our teachers and staff to remain at the high-performing levels they are, we need to provide them ongoing trainings and support. And then the strategic plan implementation. So as I started off, this is really a dictate from 140 staff members, excuse me, school and community members from across the Auburn community, really focusing on our five goals of teaching and learning, technology, community partnerships, health, wellness, and safety, and transitions. So a summary of the positions, which total 374,616 dollars, are listed here. The only ones that I have not mentioned already is the sharing of a permanent substitute between the Packer Chalk and Bryn Mawr schools, and that really is to ensure that there is consistent staff support for our youngest students if someone needs to be out. And also, an appendix C position for our strings teacher. Those students, three years ago, started learning strings in grade three. They'll actually be moving to grade six at Auburn Middle School, so we want to make sure that that program continues and moves forward. And then finally, an LPN to support a medically fragile student who will be entering our preschool. In total, we take our responsibilities seriously to work closely with the town to try and minimize the financial impact to its residents. We have offsets totaling nearly $2.8 million, and these come from school choice funds, grants, Medicaid receipts, and every revolving account that we have. So in total, the request from the Auburn Public Schools is $26,934,157, which represents a 4.2 percent increase over the approved FY '19 number, for a total of just over $1 million. Important to note, in Governor Baker's proposal that he has submitted, and that generally is the one where we see our lowest level of state aid, or Chapter 70 as it comes through, is for nearly $771,000. And at the State House, they continue to push for some increased funding, not only for Auburn, but for districts across the Commonwealth. So a few assumptions that we had to make because we don't have all of our final counts. We always use our October 1st counts. We've level-funded our grant monies. We won't know what those amounts are until sometime during the summer. We've projected our Medicaid at $185,000, and we'll have an article on the May Town Meeting about that. Our circuit breaker reimbursement, we know, will be $291,554. And we're maintaining the same number of school choice slots, as we've had previously, for a total of 82. Additionally, we have placed all eight IAs and ABAs in their common positions, but we know that they will need, several of them will need, to move to support students with whom they work. We'll have 11 regular education school buses. We will use an offset of $100,000 from bus fees that will be collected. And as noted previously, we've utilized offsets in all revolving accounts, as well as grants. But most importantly, so what I've talked to you about, is an awful lot of numbers, and you're going to hear a lot more numbers from the leadership team when it is their time to present. But I'd ask everyone to keep in mind that this is really what we are here for. It is really about the students. We want to be sure that whether it is through the fine arts, through athletics, through the classroom, and in every other regard, that this budget reflects opportunities for our children to excel, to be supported, and to be challenged in their work. So as we move forward, and it's really important, not only to the school committee and myself, but to the leadership team, that we really stay very transparent in working with the entire Auburn community. So we sent invitations to town meeting members to come to this evening's public hearing, as well as advertising it in local media outlets. We will ask, we will provide opportunities for anyone in attendance tonight to ask questions, and even if there aren't any this evening, or if some come up after the fact, please call, as I'm happy to be answering any questions at any time. The administrators are going to present their budget. They have all been posted to the Auburn Public Schools website, and we have a copy of the budget here. It does reflect our priorities, as previously indicated in the strategic plan, which came from the Auburn community. The website gets regularly updated, all about, and the intention being to be transparent. So Mr. Chatz, our moderator, will serve as such tonight, this evening, as well. Each administrator will read aloud his or her line items in their respective budgets, and they'll actually go through and read the adjusted rate, and if there is an offset, they will note that as well. If you remember, there are about $2.8 million in offsets. If at any time you have a question, please just state "hold," and Mr. Stenzel will recognize you once the individual, the administrator, gets to the bottom of the page or section, and your question can be answered at that time. So in closing, before we get to the rest, Steve Jobs had said, "Be a yardstick of quality." Some people aren't used to an environment where excellence is expected. Well, as superintendent, I'm very proud to tell you that excellence is expected in the Auburn Public Schools each and every day, not only for our students, but from our staff. So with that, I'm going to turn it over, or invite, with your permission, Mr. Chair, invite the leadership team up to actually walk through the budget.
Sounds great. Maybe we could exit stage.
Oh, my gosh. George is connected in there.
Oh, you know why? There's cords under it.
You have to go against the grain.
Chair comfort. An upgraded chair comfort.
Sorry. I don't know which way to go.
I should be okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Okay, our first speaker tonight will be the high school principal, Mr. Handfield.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Principals, $242,000. Secretaries, $129,393. Instructional staff, special education, $526,215, with an offset of $49,016, for an adjusted rate of $477,199. Instructional staff, regular education, $3,795,671. Specialists, $492,368. Librarian, $90,557. Guidance, $422,516. Guidance secretary, $41,258. Instructional assistance, special education, $118,842. ABAs, $194,638. In-school suspension monitor, $40,000. Custodians, $340,991. Nurses, $66,124. Contracted services, to include longevity, teacher stipends, building tech coordinator stipend, and other, $129,974, with an offset of $113,900, for an adjusted rate of $16,074. Substitutes, to include teachers, Saturday morning school, AHS, IA substitute, AHS supplemental instructional services, special education teachers, and special education instructional assistants, $53,100, for a total payroll of $6,683,647, with anticipated offsets of $162,916, for an adjusted rate of $6,527,31. Postage, $2,000. Principals office supplies, $1,180. Printing supplies, $15,000. Principals dues, $5,029. Classroom supplies, $18,860. Art supplies, $4,275. Staff travel, $500. Library supplies and books, $10,000. Audiovisual supplies, $1,190. Arts supplies, $4,275. Staff travel, $500. Library supplies and books, $1,000. Audiovisual supplies, $1,700. Arts supplies, $4,275. Staff travel, $500. Library supplies and books, $1,000. Audiovisual supplies, $1,700. Guidance supplies, $10,054. Wood tech supplies, $5,600. Graphic supply, $7,886. Athletics, PE class supplies, $5,250. Music and fine arts class supplies, $3,617. Curriculum competitions, $19,160. Awards, $2,890. Fuel, oil, and propane, $55,500, with an offset of $5,000, for an adjusted rate of $50,500. Electrical, $150,000, with a proposed offset of $56,148, for an adjusted rate of $93,852. Water, $11,700. Sewage, $7,300, with an offset of $1,000, for an adjusted rate of $6,300. Telephone, $8,500. Building repair and maintenance, $95,000, with a proposed offset of $35,000, for an FY '20 adjusted rate of $60,000. Field maintenance, $10,000, with an offset of $10,000, for a FY '20 adjusted rate of zero. Custodial supplies, $12,000. Total support costs, proposed, $482,881, with anticipated offsets of $107,148, for an FY '20 adjusted rate of $375,733. Total building costs, $7,166,528. Anticipated offsets, $270,064, with an FY '20 adjusted rate of $6,896,464. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Are there any questions? Not seeing any, then we'll move on to the middle school budget. Mr. Desto.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Principals, $218,500. Secretaries, $120,182. Instructional staff, special education, $459,146. Instructional staff, regular education, $2,611,314, with an offset of $51,762, for a total of $2,559,552. Specialists, $493,898. Guidance, $271,671. Instructional assistance, special education, $166,764. ABAs, $69,212. Math and literacy paraprofessionals, $35,611.93, with an offset of $35,611.93, for a total budget impact of zero. Nurse, $62,055. The salary subtotal is $4,727,562,93, with offsets of $87,373.93, for a total of $4,640,189. Contracted services, to include non-athletic after-school programs, longevity stipends, building tech coordinator stipend, and other, $71,363, offset of $52,183, for a total of So that brings the entire total of salary, I'm going past that, not there yet. Substitutes, to include teachers, instructional assistants, special education teachers, and special education instructional assistants, $44,500. Total payroll, $4,843,425.93, with an offset of $139,556.93, for a total of $4,703,869. Postage, $2,500. Principals office supplies, $1,000. Printing supplies, $15,000. Principals dues, $1,100. Everybody knows I'm referring to dollars at this point. Principals professional development, $3,000. Commencement, $2,000. Classroom supplies, $15,500. 504 supplies, $250. Staff travel, $500. Library supplies and books, $3,238. Audiovisual supplies, $958. Guidance supplies, $1,100. Art supplies, $2,708. Athletics, PE supplies, $1,500. Music supplies, $4,800. Awards and incentives, $2,000. Fuel, oil, and propane, $48,410, with an offset of $5,000, for a total of $43,410. Electrical, $160,000, with an offset of $115,000, for a total of $45,000. Water, $4,000. Sewage, $2,500, with an offset of $500, for a total of $2,000. Telephone, $6,000. Building repair and maintenance, $75,000, with an offset of $25,000, for a total of $50,000. Custodial supplies, $8,000. Total support costs, $361,064, offsets $145,500, for a total of $215,564. The grand total for building costs at Auburn Middle School, $5,204,489.93, with offsets totaling $285,056.93, for a grand total of $4,919,433. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Any questions? Not seeing any, then. The next one will be Packer Chalk School. Ms. Stanek.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I apologize. Secretary, $38,071. Instructional staff, special education, $246,133, with an offset of $80,791, for an adjusted rate of $165,342. Instructional staff, regular education, $924,305. Media technology coordinator, $45,278.50. School counselor, $80,791. Custodians, $97,426. Instructional assistance for special education, $113,114. Instructional assistance, ABA, $53,553.50. Instructional assistance, regular education, $113,307. Math paraprofessional, $19,436.97. Nurse, $55,155. New permanent substitute, $8,100. Contracted services, to include after-school program, longevity, stipends, building technology coordinator stipends, teacher in charge, and other, $17,558. Substitutes, to include teachers, instructional assistants, special education teachers, special education instructional assistants, for $17,000. Total payroll, $2,118,442.62, with an offset of $80,791, for an adjusted rate of $2,37,651.62. Postage, $400. Principal office supplies, $2,000. Printing supplies, $4,500. Principal dues, $625. Principals professional development, $1,500. Classroom supplies, $10,450. Preschool supplies, $1,500, with an offset of $1,500, for an adjusted rate of zero. 504 supplies, $250. Staff travel, $100. Textbooks, $1,000. Library supplies and books, $1,000. Audiovisual supplies, $1,700. Guidance supplies, $500. Art supplies, $1,000. Athletic and PE supplies, $750. Music classroom supplies, $750. Fuel, oil, propane, $24,525, with an offset of $8,000, for an adjusted rate of $16,525. Electrical, $34,880, with an offset of $11,000, for an adjusted rate of $23,880. Water, $3,000, with an offset of $500, for an adjusted rate of $2,500. Sewage, $2,800, with an offset of $500, for an adjusted rate of $2,300. Telephone, $2,000. Building repair and maintenance, $26,500, with an offset of $5,500, for an adjusted rate of $21,000. Custodial supplies, $6,000. Total support costs, $127,730, with an offset of $27,000, for a total adjusted rate of $107,730. Total building costs for Packer Chalk School, $2,246,172.62, with an offset of $107,071, for an adjusted rate of $2,138,381.62. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Any questions? For the Bryn Mawr School budget, Dr. Chamberlain.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Principal, $116,724. Secretary, $38,071. Instructional staff for special education, $545,239, with an offset of $147,734, with an adjusted rate of $397,505. Instructional staff, regular education, $876,281. School counselor, $69,919. Specialists, $183,600. Specialists, $183,67. Media technology, $45,278.50. Instructional assistance for special education, $245,494 with an offset of $62,71 for an adjusted rate of $183,422. Instructional assistance, regular education, $121,912. Math and literacy paraprofessional, $55,185.94 with an offset of $36,397 for an adjusted rate of $18,788. ABAs, $408,635. Custodians, $97,426. Nurse, $75,334. New positions, new ABAs, $72,900. New permanent sub, $8,100. New LPN ABA for the preschool, $35,000 for a total in new positions of $116,000. Contracted services to include after-school programming, longevity stipends, teacher in charge, building tech coordinator stipends and other, $13,658. Substitutes to include teachers, instructional assistants, special ed teachers and special education instructional assistants, $19,000 for a total payroll of $3,027,226 with offsets of $246,203 for an adjusted rate of $2,781,23. Principal office supplies, $2,000. Postage, $500. Principal's professional development, $1,500. Principal's dues, $625. Classroom supplies, $11,350. Preschool supplies, $2,250 with an offset of $2,250 for an adjusted rate of zero. Printing supplies, $4,800. Staff travel, $100. Textbooks, $1,000. Library supplies and books, $1,000. Audiovisual supplies, $1,700. Guidance supplies, $500. 504 supplies, $250. Art supplies, $1,000. Athletic PE classroom supplies, $750. Music classroom supplies, $750. Fuel, oil, propane, $22,500 with an offset of $7,500 for an adjusted rate of $15,000. Electrical, $20,000 with an offset of $10,000 with an adjusted rate of $10,000. Water, $6,000 with an offset of $500 with an adjusted rate of $5,500. Sewage, $3,500 with an offset of $500 for an adjusted rate of $3,000. Telephone, $1,100. Building repair and maintenance, $15,000 with an offset of $5,500 for an adjusted rate of $9,500. Custodial supplies, $3,500. Total support costs, $1,675 with offsets of $26,250 for an adjusted rate of $75,425. Total building costs, $3,128,901, offsets of $272,453 for a final adjusted rate of $2,856,448. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Any questions? Mr. Lindberg?
Steven Lindberg, Precinct Four. Hi. What kind of questions are you looking for from us? What would you...I'm just curious. The reason I ask is, the numbers are the numbers. They're great. I don't know. Educate me because I don't know where to begin. I'm a new town meeting member and I don't have any comparison. For instance, I don't know what your FY '18 actuals were or your '17s or...so I can't look at your trends. So I can't look at what has gone up and what has gone down. So I'm counting on you when you go through it. Maybe at the end, tell me where your big swings are. I can see them. Like, I can see the electrical and I think that's great. I'm curious to know how that's come about. Do you go out to bid on that or is it solar energy? Go out to bid on it? That's fantastic. So you all know your budgets better than we do, but if you could just comment on your major swings, like, I know I can see them numbers-wise, but to hear them from you would really help, especially if, you know, the social studies texts are in there or wherever your big swings are, down or up. That would really educate me a lot because I can't see your trends. Like, if FY '17 or '18 actuals were there, they would bite me. Like, okay, wow, look at that. But they're not there. So you could help a little bit. I know that the presentation was great, but I wish I had it in my hand because Mary Ellen highlighted some of those swings, but I'm just at a disadvantage. So if you could do that, that'd be awesome. My two cents.
Should I come up sooner? Thank you. Swanson Road Intermediate Budget, Dr. Lopez.
Principals, $218,499.84. Secretaries, $74,690.88. Instructional staff, special education, $378,116. Regular education instructional staff, $1,901,589. Specialists, $630,291. Guidance, $150,167. Instructional assistance, special education, $206,293.35. Instructional assistance, regular education, $42,765.90. ABAs, $95,080.70. Visual impaired paraprofessional, $25,594.17. Math paraprofessionals, $78,541.38 with an offset of $39,659.52. Adjusted rate, $38,881.86. Custodians, $143,0947. Nurse, $115,226. New grade five teacher, $48,075. New counselor, $52,885 totaling $100,960. Contracted services to include after-school programming, longevity stipends, grade level leaders, building tech coordinator stipend and other, $40,675, excuse me, $40,675. Substitutes to include teachers, instructional assistants, special education teachers and special education instructional assistants, $59,100. Total payroll, $4,261,537.22. Offsets of $39,659.52 totaling $4,221,877.70. Postage, $500. Principal's office supplies, $3,500. Printing supplies, $9,500. Principal's dues, $1,500. Principal's professional development, $3,000. Classroom supplies, $16,500. 504 supplies, $500. Staff travel, $100. Textbooks, $2,500. Audiovisual supplies, $3,000. Guidance supplies, $2,250. Art supplies, $2,000. Athletic PE classroom supplies, $2,000. Music classroom supplies, $2,000. Fuel, oil and propane, $41,000 with an offset of $10,000 totaling $331,000. Electrical, $65,400. Offsets of $15,000 totaling $50,400. Water, $5,500. Offsets of $1,500 totaling $4,000. Sewage, $4,500. Offset, $1,500 totaling $3,000. Telephone, $2,500. Building repair and maintenance, $36,750. Offsets of $12,000 totaling $24,750. Custodial supplies, $9,000. Total support costs, $213,500. Offsets of $40,000 totaling $173,500. Total building costs, $4,475,37.22. Offsets, $79,659.52 totaling $4,390, excuse me, $4,395,377.70. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Any questions? The athletic budget will be next with Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Athletic director, $50,000. Offset of $50,000 for an adjusted rate of zero. Secretary, $41,258.47. Coaches to include high school coaches, unified sport coaches, middle school coaches, the fitness room and the athletic trainer, a total of $227,300. Contract services, an additional $500. Total salaries, $319,058.47. An offset of $50,000 for a total adjusted rate of $269,58.47. On the AD, that would obviously stand for athletic director. So the athletic support cost, the office supplies are $460. The athletic director postage is $300. AD dues are $300. High school transportation, $63,500 with an offset of $8,000 for an adjusted rate of $55,500. Game management ice time, $44,000. An offset of $15,000 for an adjusted rate of $29,000. Game ticket takers is $15,000 with an offset of $4,000, an adjusted rate of $11,000. Coach's professional development is $2,000. Athletic reconditioning is $15,000. Middle school officials is $3,800. Middle school transportation is $5,500. Middle school equipment, $4,800. Auburn High School team equipment, $25,000. Supplies training, first aid is $5,500. Athletic awards is $8,500. Athletic insurance is $10,500. MIA Southern Worcester County League dues, $6,500. Total athletic support cost, $210,660 with a $27,000 offset for an adjusted rate of $183,660. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Any questions? Yes, sir.
My name's Tom Kies. Questions directed at Dr. Brunel, actually. Is it possible to get a revised version up on the website? I pulled down a copy today and bulk of my questions were actually regarding the line items for this particular section of the budget, athletics, because the version that's up on the website now is missing most of the specific line item designations.
I apologize for that. I didn't realize that that was this week. You definitely get a post. Would you like a copy here?
You have it now. Okay. Okay. Your work.
The fine arts budget, Ms. Garrel?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Fine arts office supplies, $565. Fine arts travel for teachers and department heads, $525. Fine arts dues, department heads, $135. Transportation, $13,500. Music staff duties, $3,000. Awards, $1,200. Fine arts equipment, repair and maintenance, $5,500. Band uniforms, $4,000. Band equipment, $6,500. And new appendixy stipend for the strings program is $4,500. And our total fine arts support costs are $39,425. And the combined support cost for fine arts and athletics, $250,85 with an offset of $27,000 and adjusted rate of $223,85. Total program costs, $569,143.47. Offset of $77,000 and adjusted rate of $492,143.47. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Any questions? The central office budget will be next. Mr. Bouvier, Ms. Wazbicki and Dr. Laiszall?
I will start with the central office budget. Superintendent of schools and administrative assistant to the superintendent, $255,223.10 with an offset of $32,000 for an adjusted rate of $223,223.10. Assistant superintendent, $135,749. Director of people services, $113,875.6. Business manager and the assistant to the business manager, the payroll specialist, for a total of $168,098.32. Secretaries, $95,255.37. Bookkeeper, accounts payable, $56,562.48. Technology support maintenance, $155,707.50. Director of technology, $98,250. District data coordinator, $56,561.70. Custodian, $24,357. Math coach, $90,557. ELL tutors, $143,607.70. Contracted services to include longevity stipends, contractual mileage and other, for a total of $16,764. New positions in the central office budget, a new ELL tutor, $22,930 and two new social emotional professionals for a total of $122,126 for a combined total of new positions of $145,056. Total salaries, $1,555,623.60 with an offset of $83,731 for a total of, with a projected adjusted rate of $1,471,892.60. District wide costs, legal notices, $1,000. Census, $750. Legal services, $10,650. System-wide travel, $15,000. Teacher salary retirements, $45,233. Crossing guards, $45,000. Transportation for regular education, $764,000 with a $100,000 offset for adjusted rate of $664,000. Transportation for community service learning, $12,000. Degree changes, $165,777. Other contractual obligations, $287,678. Site managers, $20,000 for a total of $1,367,88 with a $100,000 offset for an adjusted rate of $1,267,88. School committee costs, $9,000. Superintendent costs, which include postage supplies, dues, publications, total of $14,850. Business managers' costs, which include computer supplies, office supplies, office travel, dues, professional development and the annual audit, is $6,800. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Technology directors, computer supplies, $18,000. Technology Directors, Computer Supplies, $18,000, offset by $7,500 for an adjusted rate of $10,500. Directors, Professional Development, $1,500. Directors' Dues, $829. Technician Support Travel, $664. Computer Maintenance, Contracted Services, $71,992, offset by $20,000 for a total of Computer Software, Contracted Services, $201,565 with a $90,000 offset, making the total For a grand total of $294,550 with offsets of $117,500 offset for an adjusted rate in total of $177,050. Thank you.
Thank you. Assistant Superintendent Costs, System-wide Professional Development, $150,000 with an offset of $80,000 for an adjusted rate of $70,000. System-wide Classroom Supplies, $12,500 with an offset of $7,000 for an adjusted rate of $5,500. Substitute Staff, Assistant-wide Professional Development, $16,000 with an offset of $10,000 for an adjusted rate of $6,000. Assistant Superintendent's Professional Development, $1,500. Assistant Superintendent Supplies, $2,000. Assistant Superintendent Dues, $1,000. Assistant Superintendent Publications, $500. District-wide Textbooks, for new K-5 Social Studies text, $80,000 for a total of $263,500 with an offset of $97,000 for an adjusted rate of $166,500. Concurrent Enrollment Opportunities, $20,000. English Learner Education Costs, to include translators, teaching supplies, testing supplies, and staff travel, $23,400. Director of People's Services Costs, to include directors' supplies, staff travel, directors' professional development, directors' dues, and collaborative memberships, total of $20,100 with a complete offset of $20,100 for an adjusted rate of zero. Health Service Costs, to include health services, contracted services, physician stipends, health services supplies, nurses' substitutes, nurses' conferences, and nurses' travel for a total of $21,600. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Any questions?
Regarding what the district-wide costs, I just wondered if, can we get a quick explanation what the degree changes would constitute?
So through the chair, teachers have to put in by October 1st of this year. So if they are going to be earning a master's degree or perhaps master's plus 15 credits in order to move their lanes, they need to notify us. So this is based on projections of where they think they'll move on the salary schedule. Thank you. You're welcome.
Okay. To finish off the central office budget, part of the building expenses, I'm just going to finish that off. The fuel oil is $17,300. Electrical, $9,500 with a $2,700 offset for an adjusted rate of $6,800. Water and Sewage, zero. It's with the fire department. Custodial Supplies, $1,500. Building Repair and Maintenance, $7,800. Telephone, $3,600 for a total of $39,700 with an offset of $2,700 for an adjusted rate of $37,000. Total Support Costs for Central Office are $280,588 with offsets of $337,300 for an adjusted rate of $1,743,288. And our total building costs are $3,636,211.60 with offsets of $421,31 for an adjusted rate of $3,215,180.60. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. The facilities budget, Mr. Fahy.
Facility Director, $103,004. Maintenance Mechanic, System-wide, $23,251.2. Contracted Services, Longevity, $240. Total Salary, $126,491.6. Building Security, $30,000. Equipment Repairs, District-wide, $10,000. Equipment Services Controls, District-wide, $65,000. Fire Extinguisher Inspections, $2,500. Maintenance Staff Miles, $2,000. Truck and Gas Maintenance System-wide, $10,000. Custodial Overtime, District-wide, $10,000. Total Support Costs, $129,500. Total Building Costs, District-wide, $255,991.6. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Any questions? The last one, I believe, is the pupil service. Pupil Services Budget, Ms. Reedy?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. District-wide Support Staff, to include physical therapists, occupational therapists, and the job coach, $215,257.92. District-wide School Psychologist, $171,960. District-wide Special Education Team Chairpersons, $254,323. District-wide B C B A and B C A B A, $156,884.60 with an offset of $91,328.60 for an adjusted rate of $65,556. Speech and Language Pathologists and Teacher of the Visually Impaired, $373,290. Contracted Services, to include longevity, stipends, summer program, and beyond, the school day, $58,332 with an offset of $38,000 for an adjusted rate of $20,332. Total Salary for the Pupil Services, $1,200, excuse me, $1,230,47.52 with offsets of $129,328.60 for an adjusted rate of $1,107,182.92. Home Tutoring, District-wide, $18,000 with an offset of $18,000. Contracted Services, $165,000 with an offset of $155,000 for an adjusted rate of $10,000. Psychological Testing Services, $10,000 with an offset of $10,000. Classroom Supplies, $20,000 with an offset of $20,000 for zero impact on the budget. Homeless Transportation, $25,000 with an offset of $25,000 with no impact on the budget. Special Education In-Town Transportation, $365,000 with an offset of $140,000 for an adjusted rate of $225,000. Non-public School Transportation, $218,959 with an offset of $140,000 for an adjusted rate of $78,959. Tuition to Massachusetts Public Schools, $11,578. Tuition to Non-public Schools, $600,517,000 with an offset of $475,517 for an adjusted rate of $125,000. Tuition for Special Education Collaboratives, $313,481 with an offset of $100,000 with an adjusted rate of $213,481. Total Support, actually, total Program Costs are $2,977,582.52 with offsets of $1,212,845.60. Adjusted Rate, $1,764,736.92. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Any questions? That will conclude the public hearing of the fiscal year 2020 draft budget.
Just a couple of statements to Ms. Lindberg's question and to others who may be wondering. So in looking at our total budget request increases, just about $1,084,000. So if we take the new positions for about $375,000, it leaves about $700,000 difference. Throughout all of the lines, you could see in terms of supplies that there was some variability, sometimes went up and sometimes went down in those. Electrical, we are counting on some, haven't gone out to bid, getting some good prices and hopefully some, a solar impact on that. But we have set aside funds to negotiate. So built into here, or anticipated to be built into here, we'll be negotiating contracts for our secretaries, custodians, and IAs. So there's money for that. And then also the remainder of that really by and large is for contractual obligations with our budget being about in the vicinity of 85 percent salary. That really accounts for the rest of it. So there really aren't major swings in terms of supplies and materials. It's largely for contractual. You're very welcome. I think you're dismissed. Thank you very much for coming to the public hearing. Thank you.
Okay. Like to thank the administrative team for their presentations of budget. That was great. Dr. Brunel, thank you for your additional comments. That was pretty quick in gathering up that information, and I'm sure that gentleman appreciated it. And we now move on to, we don't need to close the public hearing, do we?
I don't think so.
No. We're good. Seeing the room completely cleared, we don't have any citizens' comments, but we do have some special recognitions this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do want to recognize two students who, the Day on the Hill is an annual event that takes place down at the State House, and that will actually take place this Friday. So very exciting. We have Alexis McGrail, who will represent Auburn High, but we actually have Madison Poschkis, who in a copy of her essay submittal was included in here, she actually won the right to serve as the governor during the Day on the Hill. So it is very exciting. I've had the chance to see Madison a couple of times and said to her, I was just so impressed with her essay. So both of these young ladies will come to see us at a meeting in May, where it's tentatively scheduled for May 22nd, so they can fill us in on their example. But really excited for them to go down and do this. So wonderful day.
Congratulations to them. Any comments?
Are they juniors, seniors? Madison is a senior, and they both would be seniors. Yes, yes, they both should be seniors. Yep.
I'm sure they're going to represent us very well.
Definitely.
Yeah. And I would now seek approval of the minutes of March 21st.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes of March 21st.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote. I'd just like to say that we're going to miss our student representatives. Ryan and Ally, always very entertaining and thorough. And we now move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we have presented here, I actually am seeing a typo, it should be calendar surveys for the 2019, 2020 school calendar. As you know, and at your request, we did survey parents, students from Auburn High, and staff regarding their preferences with the school calendar, most notably the February vacation that has been abbreviated for the past five years, as well as the long weekend in March. And happy to report that we had about 1,400 staff and parents who responded to the survey, which was really a terrific rate that we received. Additionally, I just want to share that at the finance committee meeting recently, Mrs. Greemont Town Clerk reminded me that the presidential primary will be held on March 3rd of 2020. And with the voter turnout being 44 percent the last time for the presidential primary, in our discussions, I think it makes sense to have a half-day that day to make sure that there's ample parking for voters. She thought that the turnout was likely to be the same, if not more than. So that's the only other change that I have presented in here for your consideration.
Is that already noted, sorry, through the chair?
Yes. It is.
Okay. So thank you for running that survey, and the results were, I would say, rather unexpected. I knew that there were certainly many staff that were in favor of returning the full February vacation, and I know there are also some parents, at least a lot of them that I ran into. So I guess, I guess the way I'm going to support this is, it's going to weigh on me a little bit because it's, it's about 50/50 when it comes to staff and parents when you look at the percentages. It could go either way. So I do feel for the, for the parents who are going to think that they're unsupported by me, especially those who, who I had spoken to probably over the past month or so, and said that I believed that it would stay as-is. And I don't know that it's not going to stay that way after we vote this. But just in explaining myself here, I will be supporting the return of the full February vacation. And that's based on, a few years back, when we asked our staff to adjust their calendar so that we could construct the Auburn Middle School, as well as all the moving around that we had to do with the other schools and the closes. And without hesitation, they came forward and said, yep, that's not a problem. We'll do that for the district because they obviously cared deeply about the district and about our students. So I think the opinions and the attitudes about that vacation have changed over the years. I think probably the second year, I think a lot of staff was still on board, probably even some of the third year. But I think we're at a point now where these numbers show that our staff is not in all in agreement with the shortened vacation. A small percentage of them are, but the great majority want that vacation back. And they work hard, they take great care of our children, they nurture them throughout the year. I just think they do a fantastic job. I know that they respect us, and we have that mutual respect for them. So even though it's going to hurt a few parents, and the way I keep trying to reason with this is by saying it's only, it's only three days. It's only three additional days of that week that we're talking about, whether it's for childcare or whatever other issues that parents might have with that full February vacation. So that's kind of where I'm at with that. I feel bad for those parents who, who do want to continue with the abbreviated February vacation. However, I will support, I will support our staff and their efforts to get back the vacation that they gave up for us a few years ago when we needed them to do so. So that being said, I will turn it over to the rest of the committee for their comments.
You can. No, I agree with a lot of what you said. They were, the staff was very passionate about their feelings on the break. It is something that they feel strongly about, obviously, with these results. So I am in favor of bringing it back as well, but I do think when it's time for teacher negotiations again, we need to discuss those PD days. Because five PD days, you know, is a lot. It's more than everyone in the surrounding towns. Even reading a lot of the comments from the staff, a lot of them also said, you know, five days seems like overkill a little bit. So I think, you know, maybe moving forward, we look at that part of our calendar. But yeah, no, I'm in favor of it.
In reading through all the comments, the pages and pages and pages of comments, and I'm thinking, who taped all that up? Oh, my word. I was looking for educational reasons from somebody that not having February vacation made for a better educational plan. And I didn't see anything in anyone's comment that somehow it improved education. So with that statement, and with the people and the comments that they made about how it would be better to have February vacation like all the surrounding communities, I would support that, too. support that too. And I mean, coming from my position, I know of some of the trials that people had and what they were able to do when everyone had the same vacation. So I would also support going back to a February vacation.
Thank you for those comments.
So, given what we have here, I actually am not completely convinced that we need to get, go back to a full week of February vacation. However, what I heard from a lot of parents was that some of the parents were repeatedly filling out the survey multiple times. Also, I feel like in order to, but what I would really like to do is, you know, we should continue to revisit this because it seems like there were a lot of other things that we would need to address too. PD days, do we want to start early? Do we want to end early? And I feel like even the way that the survey was formatted, and I know we all sat here and looked at it, so I'm like owning some of this as well, really, it didn't give you an either-or option. And it, like you said, it wasn't, if, it wasn't anything, it wasn't terribly descriptive of what we would do with the week. So I understand it's a burden to our staff for what are they going to do with their kids? Would we offer free childcare for their children while they're out? You know, we didn't really put a lot in there. So if we do bring this into the teachers' contract negotiations, maybe we think about that and have a better plan, I have better plan, because if we were to, given what the staff said, if we were to then disregard what they've said, I would say, well, let's try to give them something else that they would like, kind of as a compromise. And we would really have to overhaul our complete calendar at this point, which I just don't feel there's enough time. So that said, with, if it's either or, I will be in favor of going back to the full week of February, but I do think we should continue to revisit and come up with more creative options so that the parents can get what they need and the teachers, so that everyone feels valued. Does that make sense?
I agree with that.
Through the chair, I'm also in favor of it coming back. I did hear of people repeatedly doing the survey. In, in my own research, I know that sometimes surveys can be challenging when you do them computerized, although I think with this number, you have to do them computerized, maybe researching different systems. I'm not really sure, I'm not a technology person. So I think our teacher's quality of life and happiness is something to look at. I also think that looking at what parents want as well, a lot of the comments about all the half-days, all the PD days is something that doesn't sound like either side is super-duper happy with. I'm not sure of the necessity of it. It could be necessity, it's just out of my scope. I would love to look at snow packets in the future and see about, that's a way to have the extended summer, and I know it's a new thing in the state, but I know if, if that's an option, then we can not worry about getting four blizzards and going till almost July. We can at least cut down with that with snow packets, which I think would be, personally, I think it would be beneficial. That probably would need a survey as well to see what people think.
Well, I'm going to fill it at least fifty times, so now that I know you can do that.
But I think, I think, you know, in volunteering in the schools, I think our, our teachers were tired, I think our kids were tired. I looked for research based on illnesses, and I think because February vacation is more common up, up north and, you know, it's so different around the, I couldn't, I tried multiple literature reviews on many different search engines that I have access to. I couldn't find anything, but the medical side of me says there's something still cooking in those schools, and that's a high cold and flu season. I'd love to see if we do implement it back in, maybe in some way, and my uncle's a custodian, and he's probably going to kill me, but a way to maybe really like bleach out the schools during that week, an intensive cleaning of the schools, just to say, hey, you know what? We're doing something here. We're, we're closing the schools and we're not just opening the windows, because I love Florence Nightingale, but that doesn't always work. So that's what I'd love to see, but I'm in favor of it coming back as well. I don't think, I think if it comes back, maybe March, we don't have the extended March break. I don't think we should do both.
I have to admit that when we came back after February vacation, they had really cleaned and polished the schools. And they were very, you know, you really knew you were coming back into a clean building because they had the time.
They had the time to do it.
And they really did everything shiny.
Yeah.
I think that usually is the case with vacations, even abbreviated vacations. I think they do a great job of cleaning up, and I think what we need to remember is some of those people probably were also part of this survey, some of the people who would be taking care of the building, who would be cleaning and other various jobs, whether it's kitchen staff, this was out to the entire staff. So those are great comments though, and I agree that, I agree that we should take another look at the calendar. I also heard the same gripes concerning the half-professional days. I think the full professional days would be easier to plan around, but again, I think that's a, as you said, this is rather time-sensitive. We need to get this calendar out, people need to plan. So I think what we'll focus on this time around is getting, getting a vote on the actual February vacation, and then we can work from there, as you said, through negotiations. And a lot of those comments about illness were in there. We didn't see a lot of absenteeism, we didn't see, we didn't see that trending at all. Things were fairly leveled out throughout the year. However, being a teacher and, and for many years now in Gail, you also being that, and even parents, you can, you can see a change in your children, I think, leading up to these vacations. In a year like this where we had no snow days, by the time you get to that point in February, they're, they're sort of off the wall, just like they are leading up to summer vacation or they are leading up to Christmas vacation. There are just those certain points in time, and I don't know what it is.
I'll tell you.
Yeah. It's, but we do need the break, our teachers need the break, and, and again, that's, that's why I want to support them.
Through the chair, I just have one question and specific to contracts. Which, if any, of our collective bargaining agreements are calendar-specific? So I just want to, I guess make a mental note of what we would need to modify if we add it back in, who didn't have it in their contract.
So through the chair, none of our collective bargaining agreements currently speak to February vacation.
Okay.
The teacher's contract does have in there that they will be, they're required to work the day before school begins, the day after school ends, and three professional development days, so that gets you to your five.
Okay.
The teacher's contract also has in it that if school begins before Labor Day, the earliest it can begin is the Monday before Labor Day, the Friday before Labor Day has to be a no-school day, and students must be in session a minimum of two days and a maximum of three days. So those are really the only calendar-specific comments that I can think of. I'm sorry.
But I didn't know for custodial staff if we had.
So no, custodials through the chair work a fifty-two-week calendar, and they have vacation time to use, but none speak to a February, April, or March pregnant like that. They all do now have it because the teachers do the Friday before Labor Day.
Okay.
As a vacation. Yeah, that was put in the contract maybe twenty years ago, but I remember what it was because they were trying to have a staff school in the middle of August, and they're like, no, 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 we're going to have, negotiate this. And that's how it came out that way.
Well, what do we want to call this calendar where it's blank in that spot there?
So I would, through the chair, from what I heard, I believe you're voting for version two, which restores February vacation and eliminates, eliminates that additional long weekend in March, I think is what I heard. And just as an aside, Sutton Public Schools that had a contract identical to ours on Monday night voted to restore February vacation, and Southern Wester County Collaborative likewise, I don't know that they've voted yet, but they will soon be voting to. But interesting, some other districts are thinking of moving in the trend that we've just, you know, believing so.
I think it's definitely something through the chair to look at in the future, but for now.
I would entertain that motion.
I make a motion to approve Calendar Two for the 2019-2020 school year.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Through the chair, quick question on that voting day. Is that a day that we could use for one of the half-staff development days?
Through the chair, I did note that for half-staff development. Yes, exactly.
Excellent. Okay. Thank you.
Absolutely.
I would just close out the comments with saying, I've already mentioned a few times how much we respect our staff, we respect our teachers. I just want the parents to understand again, this weighed on me heavily, I'm sure it weighed on all of us heavily. We have great respect for our residents, we have great respect for our parents. It's a decision that we had to make, so we, we look forward to your continued support. Hopefully that doesn't waver based upon this decision, because I think we, together we all do some great things in this district, parents, students, staff.
One more thing to add through the chair. We failed to mention that students also wanted the break back, so, I mean, that is something to note. I do, you know, that I have great respect for the residents of Auburn, and they do pay these teachers' salaries, and they have every right to make their opinions known.
Yeah, absolutely.
The whole situation is unfortunate. I, on a personal level, enjoyed having the no-break, so it was tough.
Yeah, well, mom.
Well, it gave us an opportunity to do something in March that was, you know, cheaper.
As a college instructor myself too, I mean, going back to it, I'm not going to, I'm going to have pain for a few more days of childcare. It's all right.
On the other hand, there's so many commercial programs available on the, on the school vacations that the Auburn children will now be a big part in with their arts or crafts or whatever.
Daddy made a good point last week about the school tours, the college tours, a lot of them take place during that week, so.
I will, I will also add to that, that I enjoyed those few days off while my children were in school and getting some things done, so.
I'm going to tell you, you guys don't vote as parents.
I'm not voting for myself.
Not at all.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote.
So moving along, I just wanted to make you aware, we actually submitted a grant today in the amount of fifty-eight thousand six hundred ninety-three dollars. So this came out, it was announced, Senator Moore and Representative Frost shared it with us through the Office of Public Safety and Security. So seven point two million dollars was available through a competitive grant process. So we have submitted that in the hopes of bringing forward fifteen additional cameras for the district, as well as a server at the police station to continue the monitoring of those, so I will let you know. They have indicated that by the end of April, they hope to make grant awards, so hopefully I will let you know of good news if it becomes available.
That's great.
Through the chair, sorry. I learned just the other day that that grant was completed by you, Dr. Brunel, so I think kudos to you regardless of if we get it or not.
Well, thank you through the chair, very much, very much. Lots of other people gave information.
Yeah, you would never take credit for that either.
Correct.
Just another fellow meeting.
I do want to let you know that Dr. Lozey and I have signed lots of letters congratulating our students who earned either a spot on the high honor roll or the honor roll from the middle school and high school, and those actually are going out probably as early as tomorrow, but very exciting. It's a great opportunity to congratulate students for their hard work, so we never miss that opportunity. And I also just want to give thanks to Ms. Donahue, our high school assistant principal. So she had come up with vaping is becoming more and more prevalent across the Commonwealth, I would say, and I think we're working hard to educate our young students that although they may think there are no health consequences to it, that nothing could be further from the truth. So she has worked with Anytime Fitness, and I thank them sincerely for doing so as well, that any student who returns any vape materials that they have will get a free, three-month membership at Anytime Fitness to include a one-hour free PT session, and if they come three times a week for three months, they'll be provided with free membership for the remainder of the calendar year. So really trying to take, remove something that has less than positive health benefits and really turn it into a positive. So I hope kids take advantage of it, and I give huge kudos to Ms. Donahue for making this really creative.
That was very creative. Yeah, she had mentioned it the other day.
And thank you to Anytime Fitness as well.
Absolutely. Anytime Fitness, huge supporters, huge supporters, agreed.
And we now move on to unfinished business.
So as we typically do, May seventh is the annual town meeting, so I've put in here if we wish to hold a school committee meeting, I just need a vote to do so.
I would entertain that motion.
Make a motion to approve holding a school committee meeting at six-thirty prior to the annual town meeting on Tuesday, May seventh.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote.
And just a reminder, our next meeting will be on April twenty-fourth, but that you have canceled the May first meeting in light of the May seventh meeting.
Okay. And we now move on to new business.
So the high school, two of our teachers, Ms. Para and Ms. Griffin, are proposing to bring students for an anatomy two and kinesiology to see the bodies exhibit in this Connecticut Science Center. So since it's out of state, we are seeking your approval to do so later in April.
I would entertain that motion.
I'll go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve the Auburn High School field trip to the Connecticut Science Center in Hadrick, Connecticut on April twenty-sixth.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
If they need chaperones, I'm in.
Okay.
It looks like a really cool trip.
What if they don't? You still want to go?
I'm going to show up.
Yeah, there you go.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote.
And just want to remind not only all of you, but our listeners at home, that Chicago, the high school edition, will be performed this week. One of the reasons we had the public hearing here is that they're doing Tech Week. So Friday, Saturday, both at seven o'clock, and then Sunday a matinee at two o'clock. It promises to be outstanding, so I strongly encourage you to attend, and you can get tickets available online, so it should be great.
Mrs. Harrington, did they ask you to dance on that?
No, but I could have taught Roxy how to do her performance. They never contacted me for some reason.
Maybe they were looking for someone younger. It's a high school event, is all I meant. Okay, moving on.
And in terms of upcoming events, so the kindergarten screening events will be taking place next week at Bryn Mawr, the Packard Jog School, Little League Opening Day, and Fast Pitch as well. Community reading days are in full swing. We have Bryn Mawr on Friday, PAX is next week, and Swanson's was last week, so those are always wonderful events to attend. Great community support.
Okay. We now move on to everyone's favorite time of the evening, business and financial.
In your past, I provided you with a budget update, or a year-to-date budget report dated March twenty-seventh, and along with that, I provided a listing of transfers both between the series and, well, within the series and between the series, and I'd look to your approval for the, the transfers between series. But if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer any of those as well.
I would entertain that motion.
I make a motion to approve the transfers between the series as presented by our business manager.
Second.
Any discussion?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote.
Okay. And I just have one last thing, just a reminder about the busing applications, just for our listeners at home, that busing applications will be due, and if they can get them in, they're slowly coming in, but everyone should, that wants to ride the bus should be filling out an application, and they will be accepted only here at Five West Street, not at the schools. We've had some parents that have been bringing that back to the schools, and they should come directly here, so. But we're moving along, so that's good.
Thank you for that.
And that's all I have. Thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
Short but sweet. And we do not need executive session?
Correct, we do not.
I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make that motion?
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote. Good night, everyone.